Mr. Henry.
Here.
Mr. Sevili. Mr. Kaczynski.
Yeah.
Mr. Foley.
Here.
Mr. Esposito. Mr. Emma.
Here.
Mr. Corrigan.
Here.
Mr. Bella.
Here. Could you mention about the one application that's?
Anybody who's here on application, it's 22-15 Nicole Panguay, which we all know is the BKD application from a few years ago. That's the 1979 Route 35 South. That's not going to be heard tonight. They realized any variance for their sign, so they asked to carry it. And they will be providing notice and they anticipate providing this for the October meeting. So if you're here on that application, it will not be heard and there will be notice sent.
All right, thank you. The first application we'll hear tonight is 2212 Chase Basumi. Please come up.
It's been a while since you've been here, so you're still under oath, okay? And last time we were here, there was some issue or uncertainty, shall we say, as to where your property line ended on the side street, so to speak. So you submitted a revised survey. Explain to the board what's happened with the survey services.
Yeah, so the last time I was here, I had you guys told me to get the survey so we could see if that was my property or not. I got the survey done and according to the survey, it says when they redid, I guess that was Fall Wyder Road, they vacated it and gave it to my lot. So.
Okay, so I guess you're planning to move the fence further out then?
Yes.
Is any questions on the?
Mr. Chairman, I think, I think we need to know where now you want to put the fence.
As far as I can.
We have that.
So, yeah, it has to be, the zoning ordinance requires it to be set 10 foot back from the property line, so. And then, do you have any concerns with site triangle?
Mr. Chairman, there's a concern with the site triangle because this is now, it's a corner lot based on its additional property. So if you move that nine foot high between a combination of the wall and the fence into a site triangle, that may create an issue. So if you're going to move it, you may have to shorten it up to stay out of the site triangle. So it may not be able to go to the front corner of your house like you're proposing it on the original sketch.
No, I didn't want it to go to the front corner of the house, just in line with the front of the house. Like where, you know how the fence is now? It's pretty much flush with the front of the house. I'm not coming out further than that. I'm just going out towards Ridge Avenue.
Right, but where you were proposing it before was approximately on the edge of the site triangle. So as you move it closer to Ridge Avenue, you're encroaching into that area. So you would either have to angle it or move it back from the front of the house.
Is this the site triangle over here? What are you saying?
It's something like this. As you're driving around the corner, you don't want to have an obstruction. It's typically 90 by 90 from the center line to center line. If you connect those points together, that creates a site triangle.
When you, when you say you want to move it out more towards Ridge Avenue, that Ridge Avenue comes around. What part of Ridge Avenue are you talking about? The front of the house Ridge Avenue?
Where, 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 we could see that, like, this was all side yard. So now they're saying my, the property line is over here now. So just this way, you know, like.
Okay. On the, on the new drawing, where's the property line? Is it this dotted line going down?
No, it's the line that has the dimension 65.71 next to Ridge Avenue. That's the property line.
So that's the new property.
It's approximately 24 feet closer than it was before to that Ridge Avenue right away.
Jay, what's the distance between that and the, I guess, the curbing for Ridge Avenue there? How much?
The curving's not shown on this plan. It's typically another 10 feet between the property line and the curb. It's, it's, it doesn't apply, if you still have a site triangle, it may not be that dimension, but you still have a site triangle because as you're driving around the curb, you still won't be able to see cars coming in the other direction.
This might drive down that corner and like I could, you know, see where my fence, like where I want it to be. And I don't think it's going to be, it's not going to be an obstruction to like, you call it so far out. You know, by the time you, you turn and you could see where you're going, like, you can't see through like the corner of my house, you know?
And is he your intention to still build the wall and fill in the yard and then put the fence on top of it?
Yeah, I'm going to backfill it as much as I can and still have a three to four foot retaining wall with a six foot PVC fence.
Okay.
As long as he doesn't change the rating path.
Yes.
Jay, what about the site, line of sight at this point? What he wants to do is?
Well, Mr. Chairman, what I was going to suggest is we can calculate what the site triangle is. If, if the board is in favor of this application, allowing the 10 foot setback on Ridge, we can figure out what that site triangle distance is, as long as he agrees to stay out of there. Then it wouldn't be an issue. So if you wanted.
Will we know that tonight or is that something you'll have to calculate later on?
It wasn't clear based on what was submitted that he wanted to move the fence. We thought it was going to stay at the same location, but now he's moving it approximately 14 feet closer to the roadway. So we'd have to calculate what that is.
And he's going to be backfilling?
He wants to.
That fence as well from?
Correct. You will have approximately 20 feet from the curb to where the fence is going to be, which is about 10 feet on the, in the right of way. But there are 10 feet beyond, on his property from the right of way line in order to not need additional variance. Well, that's, see, that's what he would have to do, but we'd have to figure out what that dimension is.
I, I don't, if I have to stay 10 feet back from that property line, that's fine. I'll go 15 feet back if I have to. I'm not proposing that I go right up to it, you know what I'm saying? That's I.
Well, you, you, you can go, so the ordinance allows you to go 10 foot in from your property.
Yeah.
So that's okay. What we're saying is as the fence starts coming down to the intersection, it kind of has to stop. I know you wanted to have it even with the front edge of the house that faces that side of Ridge. Right, but it can't, the way the site triangle is, it would have to be, I don't know, more or less, it looks like a neighborhood of like 15, 20 foot back. It would have to stop about, you know, halfway the house. And then you could do a return against the house, you could fence in the backyard, but you couldn't go as far as the front edge of the house that you were originally thinking because you'll be in the site. So does that work for you?
So keep it back how far from the property line?
Yeah, we'll have to calculate that. Yeah. So, so, because we don't want you to have to come back here. I know you had to go get a survey and all that. So we apologize, we're kind of talking, you're not hearing. I just want to make sure there's no other issues that came up removing the wall and filling in the yard. And you might need an additional permit when you go to build. We don't need to give you the approval. They handle that internally, it's called a site movement, soil movement permit. Because you're, you know, you're creating the wall and filling in a lot of dirt. So we don't address that tonight. So what we want to do for you tonight is if the board's okay with, so the only variance, if he agrees to keep it out of the site triangle, which he has agreed, and not go closer to 10 foot of what we should call on the side of the property, it's all Ridge Avenue. So basically, he's going to have his new retaining wall with the fence on top of it, parallel to the, the side of the house that faces Ridge Avenue. So that's conforming and then it'll head towards the bend in the Ridge Avenue, you know, because his house, again, it's tough with both streets are ridge. But the front of the house faces that side of Ridge. It'll stop at a point that is at the beginning of the site triangle, so it doesn't go into the site triangle. So as far as setbacks go, since he's agreed to those conditions, he doesn't need that setback variance anymore. The variance he still does need is because the way the ordinance is written is since the fence is on top of the wall, you include the height of the fence and the height of the wall. So the fence becomes too tall and it's going to be, that's the other thing too, we can have to nail down, but we will.
Foot and four foot.
Yeah, I think it's, it's about 10 feet. Yeah, it's about six feet and four feet. So what Jay was just talking about, again, we don't want to have the poor gentleman come back again. So if the board's in favor of giving the setback, I'm sorry, the variance for the height because the fence is on top of the wall. And he's agreed to not have it closer than 10 feet and to stop the fence and the wall before it gets in the site triangle. That'll avoid that variance. And what Jay has suggested is that we give the variance tonight and that we'll have a revised plan sheet and the exact distances in the resolution next month. So Jay and I will take care of that between now and the adoption of the resolution next month. So this poor gentleman doesn't have to come back again. I mean, he was here in, in June and had agreed to survey and now he's back, so.
Mr. Chairman, I can reach out to Mr. Baschemi prior to work it out. I'll meet with him. I'll show him what it means and we'll make sure he agrees. If he does, I'll advise Mr. Kim and he can incorporate that into the.
So the last, just to confirm too, he's not going to be on the property line, he's going to be 10 feet off the property line as well.
Correct.
Again, off the property line on the side of the house that faces Ridge. The front of the house facing Ridge, again, the fence will stop when it hits the beginning of the site triangle. Jay will.
Right, okay. And then those dimensions will be spelt out for the.
They'll be spelt out and we'll have a, we'll have a revised plan that'll go to Joan's file to show exactly where the fence will be. Yeah. It's just, it's confusing because it's a, you know, they're both, they're both Ridge Avenue, yeah.
And there's the front Ridge.
Yeah, so it'd be 10 feet off the side and then it'll be whatever the distance back from the front to make sure it's out of the site triangle. So with those conditions, we would just need to grant the variance to the applicant for the fence height. Again, we'll have to get a general idea right now where the fence and the wall was originally proposed. It might be a little taller, but originally the retaining wall was going to be three feet and the fence height of six feet. And you add those together to be nine foot, which exceeds the six foot maximum under the ordinance. So we would still need to grant a variance for the fence height of, we'll put approximately.
The members have more questions?
Yes.
You could, yeah.
Let me ask you, worse, if I did want it square, I could just bring it up to that point and then go back whether it be 10, 15.
Yeah, I'll review that with you. You can decide what you want and then we'll let the attorney know and he can incorporate that.
Yeah, so you know, you won't have to come back next month. We'll just get the sheet squared up. Once you and Jay, you and Jay are okay, we'll get a copy over to Joan and I'll take care of the resolution. And so if the board gives you the variance tonight, next month, we'll adopt the resolution. You have to come back next month and then a couple of days later, give Joan a call, she'll get you the resolution. You can start moving on your permits, okay?
Thank you. Any other questions from the members? I'm sorry. But first, any other questions, the members? Open up to the public. Anybody from the public wish to comment on this application? Do you know one, make a motion to close? Second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay. Members, would you like to make a mo, oh, we haven't, we haven't approved it yet? Make a motion to approve or deny this application? That's subject to the strife, the site triangle and the 10 feet from the property line. Is there a second? Joan, real call please.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. Sevili. Mr. Kaczynski. Mr. Foley.
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan.
Yes.
Mr. Esposito.
Yes.
Mr. Emma.
Yes.
Mr. Bella.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, good job. Okay. Application 2207 Lopez? Yes, continue.
I have to apologize for my voice. How did you see this coming? I want to thank the board for carrying this so that we can consider the comments made at the last meeting. We essentially finished our professional testimony, the architect and the engineer. They're, they're both here in the event there are additional questions. And I have the applicant here to discuss how we plan to address the comments made at the last hearing. And we have our planner, once she's finished, to present her planning testimony.
Okay, continue.
Thank you.
Do I have to introduce myself? I'm one of the.
You swore in last time.
Yes. Yes, you're still under oath, okay? Please continue.
Okay, so I have the jewelry store in Washington Row. As you know, we listen to all your suggestions, so this is how we are, with the team, how we are going to answer some of them. We're going to add the wash and dry on each apartment. We're going to use, I have a utility room that we're going to use for one of you at the question about the garbage and recycling. So it's going to pull out when it's time to, so it's not going to be on the view of any of the neighbors.
It will be stored indoors as opposed to the outdoor enclosure that was shown on the last plans. And the changes that you're talking about, we didn't prepare new exhibits for tonight as a condition of approval. Submit whatever changes are required.
And also, so I, I planned, because it was a concern of one of you that it was a sign on the street that says permit parking.
Right, it was raised by, I believe, the gentleman over here that it was permit parking only on Coolidge Avenue.
There was one side. So I called the township. I called and I spoke to Jean Marie. So I required, I said, can I get a permit for the street? And she said, it's no longer a permit parking, it is residential only. This sign is no longer, it has to be taken down, but it's no longer applied for that street.
And I'm sorry, who's that you talked to and what division?
Jean Marie from parking. So I was looking to get a parking permit. So I looked in the, in one of, and the website and I called the. So and then she looked in the, I don't know where she looked, but she told me that it's no longer a permit parking.
Did she say it's only residential parking?
Residential. Residential.
For resident.
For residents only, not, not, you don't need a permit to park there as long as you live on the street. So that's what it was. And then, um, so we are gonna, in respect to parking at the store, right? We're gonna include our written leases for the residential tenants that I'm planning, if everything goes well. On-site parking spaces during business hours are reserved for commercial tenants only.
Subject to your schedule because there are days when both the businesses are closed.
Yes.
You repeat what she said, I'm sorry.
I can try to explain.
Yes.
What she's explaining is that there are five spaces on site during the days. The tenants are, it's going to be written into releases that the tenants can park there only in the evening after business hours or days that they're not open. Other than that, they're residents and they're permitted to park on the street during business hours. The commercial uses will use the spaces on site. Her tenant, as she testified last month or two months ago, was, is by appointment only. Right, so if you recall the configuration, there are five spaces. There are two sets of tandem spaces and one single space. Two, each set of tandem spaces will be reserved during the business hours, one for each business. So that she's a sole employee, the hairdresser is a sole employee. There'll be one space behind each of them for a customer and then one additional space for customers. Most of her business, as she testified last month, is also by appointment only, although she does take walk-ins. But what she also testified to was that the existing spaces on the site were more than enough to accommodate the amount of walk-in sessions she had. Anyway, keep going.
Would you address maybe to the salon? If I remember correctly, that was one individual and just takes appointments as well, if I remember the testimony correctly?
This week also, and we arrange a business, she doesn't have business hours. She only works by appointment, but she's not there three times a week and I'm not there twice a week.
She, she's never there on Mondays.
And Thursdays and Sundays.
The other, the other four days, she can schedule appointments, but she doesn't always have them.
And I don't work on Wednesdays and Sundays.
Is the, one concern I have about that is that a couple of times I rode by there and there was two people working on two different customers in the salon and there was like three chairs there, maybe even four.
That was my previous tenant.
This was last Friday, go ahead.
She's a new tenant. She just started in July.
Okay, this is last Friday. There was two people working in there on two different customers.
Two different, she's solely, I have one tenant there. Maybe she has someone that watches what she's going to do, but it's not all the time, but I, I don't know that.
I don't know, I, I just saw three chairs or four and there was two hairdressers in there working on two customers. And there could be three possibly if that third chair is being used too.
She didn't build the store, it was a different tenant. She just started there in July. So she has a different schedule. The other tenant that I had, she, she was the one that brought most of the customer, she's not longer there.
I think where, where possibly the chairman's going is, are you willing to restrict her to using one chair?
Of course, she's, that's all the leases, it's only one tenant.
I'm going to ask you to enforce that.
Okay. I'm good with that.
Continue.
I think, all the hours, you know, my hours, the jewelry hours are 10 to 5, Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday and Saturday. I close Wednesdays and Sundays and she doesn't open on Mondays, Thursdays and Sundays.
Respect to the restaurant, you're willing to put up signage at the entrances to both.
There is a big one, like, that says park in the rear, but not everybody sees it.
And if you see somebody parking at the restaurant comes into your store.
Does members have questions here?
And so, you'll be working Saturday and so you'll be.
If she has any appointments. If she has any appointment, but she takes one client at a time, I don't know. So if I have to enforce, you know, I speak to her and because I don't.
So on Saturdays, the tenants will have the parking.
On, after 5 o'clock, I'm not there. Well, not on Sunday, not on Wednesday then.
So as it stands right now, you have no full-time designated parking for your tenants?
We're gonna do it, yeah.
Good. What's the requirement? The requirement is? It's all variance?
12 holders is required for the use, the combination of the apartments and the business. 12 is required, 5 is provided.
Okay.
By staff.
You know, just, you're looking down the road here. What happens if you sell the business? I mean, do we have control over what people can do with the salon and that business? How many people can come and go? I mean, I, it seems like a problem down the road if you sell it like next month.
It was a salon before, it was a bike before.
But how do you control the parking or the customers? You, you want to say you're going to have one here, one there and just one employee there, four people. But if you sell, how are we going to control that? Saying, hey, you can only have two people in that store at any given time.
In my store, you're talking about or the?
Yeah, the whole business.
If you sell your building and you move out, there are two commercial uses in your building. Their concern would be how do the restrictions you're going to put on your tenants apply to future tenants? That might own, like, future landlords that would own the building.
Always going to be stated here too, like, this is what I'm wanting to do, no?
Well, yes, it's binding on you.
Yeah, how are you going to enforce it forever?
It would have to be written into this resolution and applied to the property.
All right, any other questions? Do you have any other testimony or?
We have our planner.
Right, okay. Thank you.
Before I bring up the planner, do you have any questions for the architect or the engineer while they're here?
Not for me. Does anybody have any questions of those? Okay.
Yeah.
So if I'm following that.
Yeah, they would be, they would be conditions. No, it doesn't go away as long as they're using the, you know, the resolution would state if the board was approved it that the salon portion can only be used in this fashion, one chair.
Yes.
And only.
Yes, sure.
And, um, you know, and the same thing in the hours of operation, same thing for the jewelry store, the hours of operation, the days of the week. And those are conditions of approval going forward. So if anyone tries to change it, then they would get a zoning violation from Andy. If they wanted to change it, they'd have to come back to the board for use variance to change it. Well, I mean, those, those are, those are all issues. That's why the requirement is that they're not stacked parking spaces. So there's five total, two are stacked, that equals four. So there's always going to be two cars that are, that are kind of blocked in if then the parking lot's full. So that's, that's a variance they need and that's why there's that, the requirement for that exact issue and other issues. Now, we should ask when they come back.
Continue.
Thank you. Planner, Nick Graviano, I'll introduce in a minute, and I had a conversation with a client. And she's willing to eliminate one of the apartments, you know, with a single apartment above and the planner will explain how the building is more viable as a two-story building with an apartment above, they have very limited retail space. Provide the explanation for the justification for the second floor and a single apartment. It reduces the, the efficiency on the parking as well by two spaces.
The one bedroom?
I think it would be a two-bedroom, which would be two spaces.
I think it would be a two-bedroom, which would be two spaces for the residents and and whatever the number is for the business, I guess it would be eight. But it's functioned for three years now without having a problem with existing spaces. Four years?
Yeah.
Last time that there was a issue.
Well, you you've heard from a neighbor that they're. Right, but she couldn't attribute that to this business. It was more related to the restaurant. That was my understanding of what you said. So one of the things we're, one of the things we're doing is we're curving between, right now there's, you can pass through from the restaurant to, there's gonna be curbing there so that the restaurant patrons can no longer drive through and park on our clients, on the applicant's parking lot or get through to the street easily. Nothing that we can do to control the parking at the restaurant. I think that's a much more significant and intense use of the parking in the area than our client's business, which is there during the day. If the residents are at work during the day.
Well, kind of with, I mean, it it was a different kind of property. Still, it could be fencing and things like that that we control others.
Right.
And I'm wondering what the client's using it based on, to say that there is no parking problem there.
Well, part of what we're dealing with here is, is, you know, recall that we have a pre-existing conditions of an undersized lot and an odd-shaped lot on a corner. So you don't have the traditional ability to say, let's building up front, parking in the back or vice versa. What what she has said is that she operates her business largely as appointment only. And to her knowledge, she's never had issues with people over parking or I'm sorry, without a lack of parking on her property. Occasionally she notices people parking in the restaurant, which she's agreed to do, is put up additional signage on her door, telling people that they can't park on the restaurant property. And if she sees them do that, she'll ask them to move their cars before she'll invite them into the store. Hairdresser works by appointment only, so that's only two spaces. Notwithstanding what you said, she's going to work that out with her current tenant.
Yeah, I saw it a couple of times too, not just once, that there was two hairdressers, two customers.
I can only, I've never driven by and seen that, so I can only go by what my client has told me that, you know, she comes in, she waits on someone and she leaves, and she limits her days of the week that she does that. And my client is also a resident of town, which would allow her to park on Coolidge if she wanted to and reserve two spaces for, for patrons, three spaces for patrons. If two are assigned during the day to the hairdresser, there will be three for her. And she seems to think that's more than enough based on the four years of operating at the site.
So what do you suggest? You're gonna have the whole top? The two apartments combined and make it one big apartment?
Would be, I guess, a two-bedroom. We have the architect here talk about that a little bit. It goes from requiring two spaces for each one bedroom to two spaces per RSI. I believe it's two spaces for the the two bedrooms as well.
What's your requirement, Jay? It's twelve right now and now bring it down to ten?
Correct, yes, yes.
And the other ones, they're stacked too. Is that considered spaces technically? You have stacked spaces like that?
That's a design waiver.
Yeah.
Right.
To request a design waiver. I mean, that's.
Okay, continue.
To the size and shape of the property. I mean, this would be very hard for her to.
Right.
Figure it's putting parapin spaces and all the other requirements. But we eliminated, we were originally, the original drawings that were submitted had seven spaces. We eliminated two in order to put in the landscape buffer and to widen the spaces to conform to socks. We could put seven smaller spaces, but you know, the only person who showed up to object is the neighbor adjacent, I'll call it behind, but on Coolidge Avenue. So, you know, we added landscaping to buffer the parking in the building from the neighbor as best we could.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Were you swearing last time? No.
No, I was not.
And then we're gonna get you swear firm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Just give us your name, swear your last name for the record.
Yes, my first name is Nicholas with an H, last name Graviano, G R A V as in Victor, I A N O. I am a planner and partner with Graviano and Gillis Architects and Planners with a business address of one zero one Crawford's Corner Road in Holmdel, New Jersey.
Thank you. I mean, give that minute job. I'm gonna wanna qualify the witness.
Nick, can you go through your education and professional qualifications for us?
Yes, I hold the bachelor's degree from Rutgers University, a master's degree in city and regional planning from Rutgers University, a law degree from the Temple University School of Law, where I received a distinguished class performance in state and local government law. I've testified before boards and governing bodies in over a hundred municipalities, including Carteret, Highland Park, New Brunswick, Gold.
We'll accept this qualification.
Thank you, Mr. Green.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. I I would like to distribute up to the board an exhibit of area conditions. I don't know where we're at on the exhibit list.
A three, A three with tonight's date.
All right. Just before I get started, A three is an aerial taken from Google Maps with pictures of the surrounding land uses to the subject property. We are before you this evening requesting a use variance along with preliminary and final site plan approval. The applicant is proposing to add a second floor to an existing commercial building that's located on the corner of Washington Road and Coolidge Avenue. The applicant has responded to some of the board's concerns regarding parking. The proposal now is only for the addition of a two-bedroom apartment on the second floor. This proposed mixed-use project is not permitted in the R five zone. This property is at the boundary of the R five zone and the B one zone. As you can see in, in A three. Next door to the property, you have the much discussed restaurant. Other property uses between Coolidge and Harding include retail operations, a firehouse, other commercial buildings, the restaurant. Across the street from the property on Coolidge, you do have a single-family residential dwelling. I show that picture because as I get further in my testimony, I'll explain to you how the applicant is providing a massing on this building that mirrors that building. It does create a, a nice aesthetic from the streetscape to have a two-story building at that corner. I'll get into that a little bit later. So as you can see, you know, this property while zoned R five residential, the R five is just this applicant's property. And all the rest of the properties along that frontage are, 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 are in the business district. The applicant is requesting the use variance for the mixed-use building. All the other variances indicated in the board planner's review letter are existing conditions, except for the parking variance that the applicant is requesting. Whereas five spaces are proposed and now with the reduction of the one unit, ten are required. So when you look at this application, now all the applicant is adding is one dwelling unit and a parking deficiency of adding the need for two more parking spaces to the site, which is pretty modest when you look at it. The board planner does indicate the existing conditions variances insufficient lot area, lot wish, front yard setback, side yard setback, building coverage, and impervious lot coverage, which the applicant is reducing by seven point three six percent. You know, this is a site that is presently a hundred percent impervious coverage. The applicant is providing buffering and landscaping to the adjoining residential property owner to provide an enhanced buffer than what exists today. A fifty-foot buffer is required. The applicant obviously has less than a fifty feet. And the applicant also does not providing an off-street loading space with the proposal. All those variances are existing conditions not augmented by this application. Strict application of the borough zoning ordinance would create undue hardship upon the developer. Therefore, the existing conditions variances can reasonably be granted under the C one criteria. I'm now gonna dig into the D variance proofs. And a lot of this stuff, you know, you already know from spending all this time away from your friends and family that the the board has the power to grant D variances for non-permitted uses in particular cases and for special reasons. That's the positive criteria of the D variance. New Jersey courts have held that the promotion of the general welfare is the zoning purpose, which most clearly amplifies the reason of that term special reasons. So in an application such as this, which is, does not involve an inherently beneficial use, the applicant must show that the site's particularly suited for the building that's proposed. Here we have a mixed-use commercial and residential bit building. And that there is not substantial impairment of the zone planner zoning ordinance with the proposal. Now, when you look at the particular suitability, the applicant does need, does not need to demonstrate that there are other viable locations within the municipality for the project. Just this site itself has characteristics for what the applicant is proposing. Here you have the applicant is proposing one additional unit to the building. With respect to the negative criteria, no variance could be granted without showing that there's not a substantial impairment to the intent and purpose of the zone plan and zoning ordinance. Looking at the particular suitability for this property, there's many characteristics of this site and a site's location in this geographic area, which make it appropriate for the one residential unit. First being it has excellent, excellent access to public transportation. Both New Jersey Transit Bus Routes one thirty-one and eight fifteen are right on Washington Road in front of the building. Route one thirty-one could take you to Port Authority. Route eight fifteen goes between New Brunswick and Woodbridge Center. So it has easy access via public transit to employment, shopping and educational centers of the region. The site also enjoys excellent proximity to parks. The site's roughly seventeen hundred feet to Jackson Avenue Park. It's approximately seven hundred feet to the Little League complex. And JFK Park is roughly twenty-eight hundred feet from the site. It also has proximity to some of the larger employment centers within the, within the municipality. It's right across the street from the elementary school. And it's roughly three thousand feet away from the middle school and high school complex, both of which are major employers in the area. As I stated in A three, it's located amongst the stretch of commercial and civic uses in the general vicinity of, of Washington. So it's certainly existing and proposed amongst non-single-family detached dwellings on that frontage of, of Washington. Looking at the purposes of zoning in the municipal land use law, this certainly advances purpose A to encourage municipal action to guide the appropriate use of lands, which will promote the public health, safety morals and general welfare. This project does that by reducing the onsite impervious coverage by over seven percent. It's providing a redesign of the parking area to provide that buffer space to the adjacent residential neighbor as well as to prevent that cut through between this site and Bellow's site. It also helps provide a modern housing stock that's built to current code standards for the one unit that the applicant is proposing. It also helps to seek promote the establishment of appropriate population densities and concentrations that will contribute to the well-being of persons, neighborhoods, communities and preservation of the environment. The one-two-bedroom apartment certainly generates a lower population than a single-family detached dwelling would on the site. Roughly three point seven people persons are generated from the single-family house. Whereas in this one-two-bedroom apartment, you'd have at a max probably two and a half residents as per the demographics. So this is certainly a residential situation that is lower in density than what you would have in a conforming single-family detached dwelling on the site. This also advances purpose G, sufficient space and appropriate location for variety of residential uses to meet the needs of New Jersey citizens. That ties in to my discussion of particular suitability before. This site is located in an area that makes it an appropriate and rational location for a residential dwelling above the existing commercial storefront. The last purpose is zoning, and I think this is a very crucial one when you look at this project is this certainly helps to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangements. As you heard in the, and you saw in the previous hearing where this application was heard, you know, you'll see the impeccably designed building. When you look at the building today, while the applicant does a great job of maintaining it, you know, it's a very unassuming one-story building on a very visible corner. Here, as you can tell with, with this building, that second floor creates a similar massing to the single-family house across the street. It frames the corner a little bit better and it provides a better design aesthetic than what you have today with this one-story building on the corner. In, in planning terms, we like to use this term framing the space. And then when you, when you go into gateways or you go into other things, there's always a massing which gives you the sense of arrival. And that's certainly accomplished through the adding of the second floor of the building that you see before you this evening. Also, the enhanced landscaping on the site, you have the landscaping in the back. You also have the landscaping on the side of the dwelling here and the front that's removing all asphalt areas and, and providing grass at that location. So not only do you have the buffer adjacent to the neighborhood, you have now lawn area in the front and lawn area in the side to, to help provide a little bit more greenery and better aesthetics on the site. When looking at the master plan, it certainly helps accomplish goals and objectives of the master plan. Specifically, goal three, to encourage and promote an improved visual environment. I think it's easy to see here with the existing and proposed building, this certainly promotes an enhanced visual environment and the landscaping on site does that as well. It also seeks to encourage the maintenance of the existing business community and provide for a desirable new commercial development. And it also seeks to encourage the desirable visual improvements in business areas. All accomplished by this application. With respect to the D one variance and the negative criteria, the modest proposal of one dwelling to the site does not cause a substantial impairment to the zone planner zoning ordinance. It's certainly an appropriate location for one residential dwelling unit. That is what it's zoned for. You know, the real zoning impact happened when the commercial uses were developed on the site and the applicant's not changing that. That exists today. The applicant's simply seeking to provide a better aesthetic for the building, give the building a better vibe, and that's, that's accomplished through the second floor. This one residential unit on the second floor is the least intensive use that the applicant can do so. Office uses or other commercial uses are gonna generate a bigger parking requirement than what you have with this single residential unit on the second floor. In terms of the C variance for parking that the applicant's requesting, it now went from twelve to ten, whereas five are proposed. It can be granted under the C two criteria. We've heard discussions about the existing uses and the proposed use. These are certainly modest commercial spaces. When you look at this building, you know, the salon is not a large size. The retail use is very modest in size, whether it's existing or future tenants. These are small spaces that not, that are not gonna generate a very intense use of the buildings or the parking on the site. I think the synergy of the. I think the synergy of the proposed residential unit and the existing business can cohabitate with the existing parking. And I certainly think reasonable conditions can be put on this potential resolution to make sure that synergy between those those uses work. So in conclusion, I certainly feel that the site is particularly suited for the additional residential unit. The proposal certainly advances purposes of zoning of the municipal land use law, specifically purposes A and G and I. And there is no substantial detriment to the zone plan or zoning ordinance with the mixed-use building. And the parking variance can also be granted under the C two criteria with the same purposes of zoning given for the D one use variance and that the existing conditions variances, which are not augmented by this application, could be granted under the the C one criteria.
Thank you. Any questions from the board members? Thank you.
Thank you.
One question here.
There we go. We got our technical difficulty sorted out. Mr. Graviano, do you have any opinion from a planning perspective about how the the site, and in many respects, is not conforming, as you said, how the intensification of the use on the property will have any impact on the area and the neighbors?
This is a very modest proposal. I do not foresee a condition where one residential dwelling at a maximum of two bedrooms creates any substantial detriment to the public good in the circumstance. As I stated before, you know, when you look at this in context, the applicant's now reduced the unit, obviously trying to accommodate many of the public's concerns, many of the board's concerns by dropping that additional unit. And I do think just one residential dwelling unit is a very modest request. That's not going to impact the neighborhood whatsoever.
Okay. And then one follow-up question, well, unrelated question. We've heard a couple of different pieces of information this evening about the operation of the salon. Are you familiar with how many chairs may be inside or how the how many customers at a time may be present at the salon?
I have been in, excuse me, I have been in this salon. I believe it's roughly six hundred square feet. It's not a big space. I believe at the time I was there, there were two chairs in there. But I think it's certainly within the board's purview to place reasonable restrictions on that salon use, which you heard the applicant in her testimony say that she's willing to do and incorporate into the leases of the tenants.
Okay, thank you for that.
Any other questions? Jay, do you have any questions about the one apartment up there? I mean, it would just be different.
As indicated, that would reduce the parking requirement. You still have all the other design waivers. They don't change with that.
Right. You all are very conscious of the municipality and are doing a great job of looking at the potential problems here. But I do think just one unit really minimizes any potential negative impacts that this proposal could generate.
All right, thank you. Any other testimony? Like to open up to the public. If there's anybody from the public that was sure. Anybody from the public wish to speak? You know, buddy, make a motion to close it to public. All in favor, say aye. Continue.
Thank you. I think what you've seen over the two sessions that we've had before you is an applicant who has done her best to address concerns of the board and the and the members of the public who commented last time. And dealing with an undersized lot, the addition of the second floor, as explained by the planner, actually makes this building fit into the neighborhood and the streetscape along Washington Road better. And as you also explained, it's the least intense use that could be utilized in that second floor. And it's an overall, I would think, benefit to the neighborhood and the streetscape. Add that second floor and fit in with the rest of the commercial uses that start with this piece of property, even though it's residentially zoned. And the applicant, as a resident, the existing business owner, I think has done her best to address the board's concerns. Thank you. And have any questions?
No, this is this is a of what it will look like.
Is that watching that the project? I believe this is coolly correct.
Yeah, that just so we're clear for the record, that's was marked last month as A one. And this rendering was A two.
It's lower than those. Your house is the one the record behind that white
Yes, sorry if you need to get up on the record, but just the, no, that's all right. The just to clarify the record, the board member was referring to Ms. Darlene Rove at eleven Coolidge Avenue, who testified last month and is in the audience.
Yes, they're proposing a concrete apron along the entire length of the parking, yes. They act, they're actually, there's landscaping that's being installed in that area. That's not shown in the existing photo. So that pole lines up with the landscaping as opposed to the parking place.
Right. Those two spaces are being eliminated.
Yes.
The applicant says that she was going to restrict the tenant parking. Why don't you make the commercial part of the street more? I mean, it says residential, but there's no permits on that street anymore.
The way it was explained to her, it was limited to residents, so she thought she would do her best to comply with that. What she has done, as she testified, what she has done in the past is her and the hairdresser park on the street and leave the parking lot open for us.
Mr. Chairman, if I might, I have a copy of the ordinance concerning the parking. And it indicates that if you're a resident of the street, you don't need a permit. But it also appears to require parking, if you're not a resident, it's restricted Monday through Friday, ten to two. So it appears that if you're a non-resident, you would need a permit to park there between ten and two, Monday to Friday. So I think when she called the clerk's office, since she's a resident, she does not need a permit, which is what the ordinance indicates. But it appears that if you're not a resident, you would need a permit.
But it was explained to her that there's no longer permit parking at all on that street.
But the problem is the ordinance is in effect. So legally, it is whether they're enforcing it or not.
What our engineer has just explained to me is if it makes it better to the spaces, excuse me, two of the spaces in the parking lot can be reserved for the apartment, leaving three for the businesses. Ms. Lopez, as a resident, can park on the street. And the hairdresser, depending on what her appointments are, would also be allowed to park on the street at various times. So if two spaces were reserved in the lot for the apartment, that still leaves three spaces for the business to operate. And she wouldn't need one of those because she can park on the street, which she has been doing.
Lives on that street?
No, no, but when she comes to work, she's a resident.
Your audience says you have to be a resident of that street, doesn't it? No, it doesn't.
The vehicle is owned or operated on a regular basis by a resident of the street.
Just Jay, for the record, what's the ordinance section?
Section seven dash sixteen point one, parking by permit only in designated areas. No vehicles shall be parked on the streets or part of streets designated in Schedule F attached here too, and made part of this section during these hours designated unless in an A is the vehicle is owned or operated on a regular basis by a resident of that street. And the section F is Coolidge Avenue, both sides, the entire length. Permit shall only be required for parking on the following streets, Monday through Friday from ten to two. Ten AM to two PM, yes.
Commuter parking is why.
Commuter, yes.
It was commuter parking.
That would put a stop to having a function. Tenants were allowed to park on the street during the day and the five spaces were open to the business. If there were, if there were two cars for the apartment, they could park, both park on the street. And that still leaves five of the businesses, which has been more than enough for her and the hairdresser to operate for the last four years.
Thank you. Any other questions for the members here?
Correct, depending on how many bedrooms. If there's more bedrooms, it may require more.
How many square feet is the apartment? Did I miss it somewhere?
It changed.
Approximately fifteen hundred. It was seven sixty and seven fifty or two. So it's approximately fifteen hundred.
You could even make a third bedroom if you want. It's tiny. Fifteen hundred, could you? You could. It's big enough, yeah.
New market rate, three-bedroom apartments.
Really? Got you. Thank you. That's that's good information.
All right. Any other questions or discussion of this application at all? Yes, a couple, a couple of times, and I only went by about three or four times. I believe that's what she had indicated that she'll require if this gets approved, yes. Thank you. Right, thank you. Any other comments, discussion of this application? Okay, thank you. Most members motion this decline or approve?
I have concerns about the parking. They need ten. They only have five. I'll make the motion. We deny this application.
Is there a second? Thank you. Sean, roll call.
Before the roll call, just everyone's clear, is the motion's to deny. So a vote of yes is a vote to deny.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Savili?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Foley?
Yes, I'd like to just get on the record as far as the problem here that I saw is the parking and and the parking issue that the client, the applicant could be creating for future residents of Sayerville that could be living there. And they would be the ones that would be left dealing with going from the street to the parking spot. So I mean, the variance, I mean, what we're looking for is ten spots coming up with five is not acceptable.
We were just, that was a yes vote.
Yeah.
Sorry, Mr. Corrigan, sorry.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Mr. Bella?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, the you have a resolution from
Last meeting?
Oh, yes. Sorry, Mr. Chairman. Yes, we have one resolution to be adopted tonight. That was the Muffy Lopez application. As you remember, that's the one on Board and Town Avenue. They had to go back and talk to JCP and Al, because they're under the transmission lines. The applicant will be removing most of the improvements, minimal variances, and also agreeing to remove all the items, improvements that are required to remove by JCP and L. Trying to find the period of time, but six months from the adoption of the resolution, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So that resolution's been drafted, submitted to the board for action.
You have a motion on this resolution?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. Savili?
Yes.
Mr. Kozinski?
Yes.
Mr. Emma?
Yes.
Foley?
Yes.
Mr. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Corrigan? Mr. Bella?
Okay, approval of last month's minutes. Do we have any comments on those? Any changes to be made? Do we have a motion to approve? All in favor? Okay. Last thing, we discussed about the mosque last time. About maybe trying to find out when they might come to the did we get any update on that at all? Chairman? Or TCR, I guess.
Yeah, this issue has been discussed the past couple council meetings. You've had residents from both sides appear. The borough attorney has been involved. He's contacted the applicant's attorney. There's an attempt to try to get the application complete at a point where it can come to a TRC. I'm going to be speaking with Mr. Michansky, Mr. Kim and Barry this evening to talk about possibly setting up a TRC, even though the application's not yet complete. So I don't have a specific date, but it's something that we're working for.
All right, thank you.
Just say that driving by it on a daily basis.
Technical review committee, that's a meeting of the professionals with the applicant. Typically, every application meets, we try to iron out all the technical issues before it comes before you.
I was just going to say that driving past her on a daily basis. But it just seems to be growing and growing.
I believe situations like that just come under the violation code and code enforcement will just permit us and give us violations.
Not something the board has jurisdiction.
But for your information, the construction official has been issuing violations on a regular basis. Technically not, technically not, because the use was a pre-existing office building. They've gone through and changed the use without any approval. So there are some some issues with what's being done. They haven't, they haven't received permits for doing anything on the property or any board approvals at this point.
Thank you. Any comments from the members at all on anything else? Quick chat looks good, yeah. Alright, we have a motion to adjourn? Second? All in favor, aye? Till next time, when is that, Joe? Twenty-six?